I call to order the May 11th, 2015 Latrobe City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask please if you would remain standing as we offer a moment of silence to the memory of Lieutenant Eric Esleric. Thank you. Before we start the meeting, I would like to ask the members of the Latrobe Police Department to please stand. On behalf of the citizens of Latrobe and the members of this council, we offer our deepest sympathies to you and the loss of your brother and your friend Lieutenant Esleric. You know, those of us that have never walked in your shoes don't realize that every day you put your lives on the line to keep us safe, and we don't say thank you enough. So I want to recognize and acknowledge the work of the Latrobe Police Department and ask that God always bless you and keep you safe. Thank you for your service. Well, how are you, Ms. Buck? Mr. Jim Mandzewski? Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell-Gradner?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Here.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Wolfert?
Here.
Sixth President. May I have approval of the minutes from the April 13th, 2015 meeting, please?
I move the minutes of the April 13th, 2015 meeting will be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to end.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
Any questions or discussion? Mike? Sorry, I'm a step ahead. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have approval of the fiscal department reports and the pay bills for the month of April 2015?
Subsumed.
May I have a second, please? Just one second. Any questions or discussions?
Ms. Buck, the bills are presented for this month, any of them outside the constraints of the budget?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll have the citizens' requests related to the agenda items only, please, if you state your name and address, and limit your comments to three to five minutes.
Jane Miller, 127 East Fort Thelton in Latrobe. I just have one question, and it's on the paid bill item that you approved. There's an item for the Latrobe Parks and Recreation for $29,802. Was that part of that there? You were talking about a payment or giving them some money or something, or what is that for?
That's the second half of our contribution for the year.
Okay, that's a standard contribution.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions related to the agenda? Committee reports, finance committee, Mike and Madeline, anything?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Public safety, Jerry, Julie?
Yeah, we have a neighborhood watch meeting June 1st, 6:30 up here. We have a speaker, can't recall his name, but he's going to give some demonstration on personal safety and security. We passed out, I'm not sure how many of our packets with different pamphlets on different things, and we're still looking for help for members or your friends.
6:30?
6:30. 6:30. And from now on, all our meetings are the first Monday of the month except for September being the Dead's Labor Day, we're just going to skip that month.
Personnel committee, Tricia and Mike, anything?
Not yet, we're getting ready to work on the police contract. We're waiting for something.
Yeah, we haven't started any, obviously, for a number of reasons.
Right.
Public Works Commissioner, Jerry, Madeline?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Okay. Community Development, Julie and Tricia, nothing. Any Board of Authority reports? I think everyone got the parking wreck in their packet. The legal Latrobe Municipal Authority was in there. Any questions on any of those?
I have a question for Mr. Kelly. You and I attended the Act 537 get-together in New Stand. Is there any further progress on that? They were looking for us to do something by our June meeting or sometime in June, sometime in June, I'm sure when, but I haven't seen anything on our agenda yet from you, so...
No, the codicil to the 1973 agreement, which is what we discussed at the meeting in New Stand, has been drafted and it's been circulated, I know, to Latrobe Municipal Authority, and their solicitors looked at it, Mr. Demoski, he made a few comments to that draft. It was then submitted to the community township municipal authority again for comments. My understanding from the last email that I read was that the comments do not seem to be opposite to each other, that they should all work well together within the framework of the codicil. So at this point, I think they are now finalizing these comments and finalizing the draft of the codicil so that hopefully a vote can be taken at the June meeting. Mr. Herschlag also sent along a revised copy of the consent order agreement, revised in the sense that the last one issued was in, I believe it was May or June of 2014. So dates have been changed, completion dates and target dates have been changed in the revised consent order agreement. I just received that today. So we're marching along, is the best I can say.
Okay, looks like it's on our schedule, and so far as you know, do something in June.
As far as I know, at this point, I have never anything to the contrary.
Any other questions? Department reports, Joe Bush?
The only thing I have is our E-Waste Collection is this Saturday, 8 to 12 o'clock, and a point of interest, that it has been changed, it is not down at the stadium parking lot, but it is in the American Legion lot. There was a conflict in scheduling, and all the flowers, to the best of my knowledge, that were out, we got them replaced. So that'll be this Saturday, 8 to noon.
Thank you.
Well, we have somebody down at the stadium, just in case they, people go down there because of the first notice.
If someone would like to volunteer their time...
Maybe we could just get him on. Maybe just, maybe we could get one of those, like, TP-like signs and just put it on the corner that says, you know, "It's not here." Yeah, I mean, I know Jared has some of those, I'm sure we can have some. You know what I'm talking about?
I'm going to build one of the businesses in Brooklyn.
Yeah. You know what I'm talking about, it's on the record. Chief Boomer?
First of all, I'd like to thank Madam Mayor and Council for the recognition of the police department this evening. I know it's appreciated by our officers, and I sure appreciate it. This past week and weekend, it's been a very bad time for law enforcement, the senseless tragic death of Lieutenant Eric Esleric. Eric was very close and dear to our department. I would like to commend the officers of our police department for the way they stepped up. Officers Dirk, Rommel, Kessler, and Sleisman spent most of the last week over in Ligonier, helping the Ligonier departments and the family of Eric deal with the tragedy and grieve. All officers worked extra and filled shifts so that we could pay our respects. Our two notice officers worked double shifts so our officers could participate in the funeral services. Our in-school officer worked the prawn Friday night in Emma Colen, and came in and worked the 12-hour shift on Saturday so the other officers could attend the funeral. City of Latrobe always has known what a knowledgeable and professional police department they have, but believe me, the caring and compassion shown by our department over the past week and weekend makes me more proud and more humble than I think I've ever been. Thank you to all my officers, I'm very grateful, and I know Eric's grateful.
Thank you, Chief. Anne, I have no... Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item on the agenda appears under the Administration Finance Department. It is a resolution, and just a brief comment first. Commercial Bank and Trust has been administering for years since the '90s our police pension plan, and they provided to the city a document basically asking for us to indicate to them who would make various decisions regarding the administration of the plan, but the form also indicated that members of council would be authorized to transfer delivered monies and securities registered in the name of the city for the fund. I talked it over with our city manager, and we both agree that that is not something that we should be doing, but that is what Commercial Bank and Trust should be doing. So we did have to amend the investment management agreement to provide authorization, and particularly who would authorize these kinds of things to occur with regard to the plan from time to time. And so the resolution basically indicates, now therefore be it resolved, that Section 6 of the investment management agreement is hereby amended to add subsection C, which will state as follows, that the principal shall certify two persons who have been elected and are now legally holding office, or who have been appointed and are now legally holding office, to provide instructions to the agent, which would be Commercial Bank. With regard to actions of the agent to sell, transfer, and deliver monies registered in the name of the police pension plan. Further, it's agreed that the bank may rely upon the authorization submitted by the principal, which is the city, until the bank is notified of any change. Section 2 simply changes the name on the investment management agreement it was entered into in 1997 by Latrobe Borough and Commercial Bank of Westmoreland County. Obviously, we are now the city of Latrobe, and Commercial Bank is known as Commercial Bank and Trust of Pennsylvania. And Section 4 states that for the purpose of granting authorization, the city designates the class of a person to cause the same. The first class would be an elected official, which would be the mayor, and/or the mayor's designate from time to time to be the deputy mayor. The second class would be the city manager, and/or the city manager designate to be the director of administration and finance. And section, it also provides that any and all other resolutions inconsistent here with are hereby repealed. Resolved in council, this date, the motion would be to enact the, adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2015-15. One second. Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Gradner?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfert?
Yes.
There's six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is a motion only, and the motion reads, "I move we authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance establishing one-hour parking on street meters in the downtown area."
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Questions? I have one. This is for the, on the street, correct?
Right, it's not the parking lot.
So we have to change the ordinance, though, to match, correct?
Right.
And that's what you're advertising, is change the ordinance?
Correct, change the ordinance. To my knowledge, we do not have one-hour meters on the streets, we're either one-half hour or two hours. So the ordinance will now provide that the street meters in the downtown area will be one-hour meters, and then, of course, they'll have to be recalibrated.
Chair or Chief, do you have any comment on this one? Any other? No? Okay, any other questions besides mine?
Joe? I just, I want to caution council, now that we have electronic meters, it's not as simple as going in and making the change. So we do have to rent a piece of equipment, which is quite expensive. So we want to make sure of what we're doing, and we want to get the biggest bang for a dollar, when we change them, change them all. In other words, what I'm saying is, we don't want to come back then in a couple weeks and say, "Well, maybe we'll make this one," you know, "a different time." It would require getting that unit again, and like I said, it's quite expensive to rent. So, you know, if everybody is good with making them all one-hour, then that's, you know, that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Joe, I just wanted to ask you, when you say it's expensive, can you give us, like, the ballpark figure, $1,000, $100, $200?
The last time, the last time we got it, it was $500, and I believe it was for three days.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Joe, would three days be enough time, basically, to recalibrate the downtown meters on the streets, or...
Yes, I would make arrangements and get our meter tech help, and we would, we would make arrangements to do that.
Tricia, did you want to say something, because I know Wayne did?
The thing is also, keep in mind, we're also going to calibrate, this meterhead at Ligonier is trading with us, with a street sweeper, so, you know, we're going to see some revenue reduction on the cost, you know, we'll see some cost reduction from Ligonier by doing this also. So we're going to kind of kill two birds with one stone. And also, I've talked to a number of business people in that, in that area, and they're very comfortable with, they feel that between a half hour and 45 minutes is when their business, when they really need that time, and they were comfortable with a half hour, but they are comfortable with 45 minutes, so an hour would work.
You can't do anything in half an hour anymore, so, you know, I think it's...
No, I was up shopping, I had to run out two to three times to put money in.
Do you want a half an hour meter?
A half an hour meter on the street, right in front of Rose.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item also appears under the Administration Finance Department. It is a resolution, and it's entitled, "Approving Association Members Services Agreement with First Lab for Drug and Alcohol Testing of City's C.D.L. Drivers." And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Latrobe does hereby approve entering into an association member services agreement between the city and First Hospital Laboratories, Inc., also known as First Lab. In the form attached to this resolution is Exhibit A. Section 2, that the mayor, city manager, and/or secretary of the city, and any other proper city officer be entered hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council this date, and the First Lab Association Member Services Agreement is attached as Exhibit A to this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Questions? Who do we use now? And where are we switching?
The State Association of Boroughs is who we go through.
Okay.
And they change to their, to their agreements. They didn't have a lot of choice in that.
So this is one of those mandated things that we're just asking for?
There will be a savings in order.
Oh, good. That's good. Is this a motion or a resolution? Resolution, okay, Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2015-16. Mrs. Caldwell-Gradner?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfert?
Yes.
There's six yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears under the police department. It's a resolution entitled, "Establishing a Handicap Disabled Veteran Van Accessible Parking Space at 320-322 Chestnut Street." And now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that a parking space located on the north of the east side of Chestnut Street adjacent to property of Patricia E. Gillis be in the same hereby designated as a handicap slash disabled veteran van accessible parking space should the applicant no longer reside at the premises located at 320-322 Chestnut Street Latropia. Then, in that event, the handicap disabled veteran van accessible parking space designation set forth herein shall cease and terminate on the last date of occupancy of the subject premises by the applicant. Section 2 authorizes the proper city officers to take all steps necessary to carry into effect this resolution. Section 3, that this resolution shall become effective immediately. And Section 4, that any and all other resolutions inconsistent here with be in the same or hereby repealed. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions?
I have a question. Chief Boomer, Joe Bush, you guys look to this application and approve of everything on? Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2015-17. Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Gradner?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfert?
Yes.
There's six yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears under the Public Works Department. It is a resolution, approving a contract with Piper's Lawn Care for mowing and related services. Now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the city does hereby approve entering into a contract with Piper's Lawn Care for the services and prices for the same described in an invitation to quote, which is attached here to Exhibit A. Section 2, that the mayor, city manager, and/or secretary of the city of Latrobe, and any other proper city officer be entered hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. This would be a three-year contract for these services. Now the motion, proper motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. No, is this just for mowing grass? Does it take care of charlie and everything outside? Just the grass?
It's just the grass, right, Joe?
It is the grass, and we've always combined any of the code officers violations that they would have, you know, an overgrown tree, bushes, a psych problem, anything that the public works can't get to, they go through and...
And then Piper's would do it, separate. And is there additional charge on that, or stuff?
It's part of the bill.
Oh, yes.
There's additional charge, Joe?
They charge for each individual property they...
Okay, but then you charge a bad-for-the property.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to comment, at our agenda session, we did look at a price schematic for different people that bid this, saying, "More than Piper's was the best price."
Yeah, same, definitely. Plus they helped save the three years.
So we're basing this, this resolution on good economics.
Definitely. Let's say it's ungood working in that. Yeah, you're right.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2015-18. Mrs. Caldwell-Gradner?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfert?
Yes.
There's six yes. Motion carries unanimously.
The last item, Madam Mayor, members of council, under the agenda, is also in the Public Works Department, and it is a simple motion. And it reads, "I move we authorize the city manager or his designate to advertise and seek bids for the 2015 paving program."
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussions?
What are we paving again, Joe?
For me?
What are we paving?
It hasn't been determined yet. This is just allowing us to start.
As much as we can.
Very good.
We take donations, Joe.
Donations are gladly accepted.
If my memory serves me correctly, you kind of prioritize things, and then you see how much money we have, and what it costs, and how far down the list we can go. Is that a very simplistic...
Very good, yes.
...explanation, so we'll see the list.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's it for the agenda items. Do we have any unfinished business?
I have an item I'd like to discuss.
Sure.
A few months ago, Chief Brazilli talked about pet oxygen masks, and just wanted to say that the fire department received a generous grant to purchase several oxygen masks. Each station here in town got three sets of masks, and in each set was a large pet mask, a medium pet mask, and a small pet mask, along with some other items used in pet rescue and rescue breathing. One of the criteria with getting this equipment through the grant was that the fire department be trained, and so there was a group from Westmoreland County, action, wasn't action for animal, but I can't think of the name. Maybe. That came in here with three individuals and trained over 20 of the fire department members, and Derry Borough also received a grant, so they were part of our training, and they received some of the masks. I just want to let the community know that we do have pet rescue masks on our fire apparatus here in the city of Latrobe. And whether he wants me to say it or not, I'd like to everyone know that Mr. Miller was part of that generous donation for the fire department to receive these masks, and so we're going to put them, hopefully never have to use them, but we've been trained, we're going to continue training others, and we have three sets with each station in town, which gives us 15 sets of that oxygen masks for any time we would, might have to use them in an emergency.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Miller, those of us that have pets know how important that is, so thank you. While we're on the subject of the fire department, Mike, maybe you could... Joe Brazilli left me a message that he wasn't going to be here, he was going to a funeral home for a fireman that passed away, an honorary member, first ward, but he had said something about, and he can't address it, maybe Wayne can address, but this...
ISO.
ISO?
Yep.
Can you just, can you explain that? Because, you know, once again, there's been a lot of things on the news about, you know, how difficult it is for fire departments, and I know that there, we need more volunteers, but once and again, our fire department always is super professional and always has the interest of the community heart, so...
I can give the 30,000-foot view of it, and Wayne can provide the specific details, I'm hoping, but the ISO rating is given to community fire departments, and it's based on a lot of factors, and some of those factors... And some of those factors, just for an example, are response time, equipment, training and so on and so forth, that they base their facts on, they base their investigation, I guess I should say, that each department is investigated, then they're given a rating. That rating is used by insurance companies and if you're a certain I S O rating, then you're priced at this rate for your per thousand dollars of value of your house. If you're a different I S O rating, then you're priced at a different rate per thousand. Latrobe Fire Department's I S O rating has improved. And I'm not sure if that means it went up or down, but I'm telling you, what I'm telling you is that it improved and your homeowner's insurance companies will get this information if they tell the homeowners and say, hey, Mr. Insurance Company, I understand that our local fire department's I S O rating changed. Does that change my monthly yearly bill for fire protection, for homeowner's insurance fire protection? Wayne can give the specifics.
It went down, right.
The rating of the fire department...
The number went from four to three, which is an improvement. First of all, you're absolutely right. We also need to thank Mr. Gray from the L M A because he and John went around with the gentleman. Part of that is obviously the fire company's largest component, but the other part of it is the quality of the hydrants and...
There's a lot of factors, right?
Yeah, and actually Tom Gray was pleasantly surprised to see that the number improved. But, you know, due to their effort, yeah, it went from a four to a three, which will, your fire insurance for your individual home in the Latrobe area should go down because of the improvement in the I S O rating. So yeah, you know, kudos to, to Mr. Gray and to John Brazili because of the work they did and the fire company in general for the work they've done to improve this, to get this improved I S O rating.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Yes, Tricia?
We already touched on three major sources of our community with good stuff, the police, the fire department and the E M Ts, but I just wanted to let you know also what they did before last week. They have been going around the different schools. I know my son's preschool and L E S, Officer Kessler and Officer Dirk. It means a lot to those kiddos to see the different entities and to have that positive look at them. I know my kid has not stopped talking about Rocky the dog since then and it's just nice to hear good messages from those kids about the fire company and about the E M Ts and about the police force in our community and know that there are positive view in our community. So, and I'm head of the firemen, they took time, I think that they, a few of them worked second shift and brought the trucks, so it's just nice that they volunteer their time off duty and on duty for us, so...
Thank you. We are very fortunate, no question about it. Under new business, tonight we're going to recognize our employees with a, with a small awards ceremony. You know, a lot of people I run into ask me, so how do you like being mayor? And I say, I love it, I really do enjoy it. And a big part of the reason is we have great employees and they make our job, my job as mayor and I believe this council's job as well, easy because they know their jobs, they do that well, they're dedicated to their community, to this community and we are very, very fortunate that we have the employees that we have. So at this time, I'm going to recognize the following employees that are here. If you would please come up when I call your name. Darla Anderson. Darla, in recognition for 25 years of service and as an administrative clerk and waymaster for the city of Latrobe Public Works Department, the city of Latrobe would like to extend sincere appreciations to you for your dedicated, professional and exceptional service to the community. Thank you for 25 years of service, Darla. We let you go. Officer Angus. Man, you're older than I thought you'd be. Police Officer Joseph Angus, in recognition for 25 years of outstanding service as a police officer for the city of Latrobe Police Department, the city of Latrobe extends our appreciation and recognition to Officer Angus for his loyalty, selfless bravery and honorable service to this community. Thank you. Police Officer Robert Rumel. Officer Rumel, in recognition for 25 years of outstanding service as a police officer for the city of Latrobe Police Department, the city of Latrobe extends our appreciation and recognition to Officer Rumel for his loyalty, selfless bravery and honorable service to this community. Thank you, Officer Rumel.
Forget it.
Ann Howe. Ann, in recognition for 20 years of service as a code enforcement and zoning officer for the city of Latrobe, the city of Latrobe would like to extend sincere appreciation to Ann for her dedicated, professional and exceptional service to this community. Thank you, Ann. Terry Penrose. Terry, in recognition for 15 years of service as a heavy equipment operator and recently as a mechanic for the city of Latrobe Public Works Department, the city of Latrobe would like to extend sincere appreciation to Terry for his many years of dedicated, dependable and exceptional service to this community. Thank you, Terry. There were a couple other employees that were to, that will be receiving awards that aren't with us today. I wanted to mention them. Jeffrey Bell, for 15 years of service as a heavy equipment operator for the city of, of Latrobe Public Works Department. Todd Dalton, in recognition for 15 years of service as a heavy equipment operator for the Public Works Department. Ann John Brazili, in recognition for 15 years of service as fire chief for the city of Latrobe Volunteer Fire Department, elected by members of the department and appointed on January 3rd, 2000 by city council as director of the fire department. Once again, thank you very much to all of our dedicated employees. That's the fun part, my gentlemen. Okay, open forum on citizens' requests. Anyone have anything on their mind that they would like to talk about?
Jim Bolton, 225 Irving Avenue. I was kind of disappointed I didn't see John here tonight. Glad Mike brought up the I S report. I just found out about it Thursday evening. Now, don't get it in the back of your mind that they may lower your insurance rates. Companies don't lower bills. But hopefully what I'm looking for is when I get my fire insurance here in a few months, that it's the same as last year. Hopefully there's, it remains the same. There's an awful lot of work goes into that to get that lowering those rates. They're looking at the fire service, they're looking at your water supply. But you're in a safe community, believe me. And on top of that, what I've been seeing in the last month on news, some of people talking, I'm extremely fortunate that I live in this community. Because of a tragic accident, I recently, the officer was killed. It shows that the neighborhood you live in, once I was looking on television, they were trying to kill police officers. Unbelievable. Why they give these people national recognition, I don't know. But when I seen what went on over in Ligonier, that's what should be national recognition. It's not a Pittsburgh or a Baldwin and so forth. So once again, you should be really happy that you live where you live, believe me. Go down the road towards Pittsburgh and life changes real quick. But once again, I'm happy where I live. I've been here a number of years, I'm quite satisfied with the city of Latrobe. There are some small problems, nothing like other cities have, believe me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton.
James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue. I'd like to, I thank you very much for your comments on the donation. Also, on that Lake Cove Airport Authority, I think gave a nice donation too, that, to that program, so...
But they're not attendance tonight.
No, I appreciate, no, I appreciated your comments and I just wanted to make a note of it. I wasn't alone, believe me. Next, on the, on the Neighborhood Watch Program, I'd like to thank the Boy Scout Troop 304, which is the Holy Family and St. John's Church is the, who they, the sponsor of the 304 troop. They helped with the distribution of the Neighborhood Watch pamphlets. Also, they're going to be, this month, they're going to be helping again from Coons Electric on out to Eaton Road with these pamphlets. They're pretty busy this week, this month, but they said that they would be willing to help us deliver those there. There's one more area, I think around Jerry's area there, Mr. Baldmarin's area that we're going to need help with, I think. Also, at the Neighborhood Watch meeting, he mentioned that we're going to have a presentation. Britain, the presentation is going to be geared towards senior citizen safety in that area. So I'm going to be placing little signs in that there. I've already talked to the Senior Citizen Center. I'll be making up some flyers in that there and also hopefully I'll be able to get them about certain areas in Lake Cove area like the high rise and things like that. The last thing I had, since we've approved the, the Piper lawn service in that there and also shrubs in that, possibly they can come over to 125 East Fourth Avenue, the house beside mine, it had been vacant for about 40 years and has a tree that is very dangerous leaning and the owner has been sent notice of that and has done nothing. Possibly we can have that tree cut down by Piper Tree Service and Lawn Service. I know they do have that service and we could build the homeowner, who has a beautiful home up in the Ligonier area and I would assume that we could put a lien against that property according to state law if we so desired. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anything else from the city residents? Wayne, city manager's report?
Just two little items, being as full of my eyes, a little information. We met with the hospital today, we're going to set up quarterly meetings with them to work together, coordinate with them better with them. There's some things that are going on in the city that they need to be aware of and they're doing some things around the hospital that we need to be aware of. So we're going to start establishing like quarterly meetings with them. The other idea is that the L E B program that you guys, you all had authorized to be on the ambulance bay as a firefighter down there and pretty soon the fire engine end will be, you know, as bright as it is in the ambulance area. So it makes a significant improvement.
Great. Mayor's report, I think I said everything I wanted to say. Maybe out of order, but I have the gavel, so... If there's nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that one.
May I have a second please? Meeting adjourned. And please take for cookies. We have had some pop and some refreshments in honor of our city employees.